I can just talk and they'll be over here. All right, we will call to order this Provo Municipal Council Priorities Retreat Meeting. It is Tuesday, April 12th at 3:00 PM. 3:11 PM. Meetings of the municipal council are being held in hybrid fashion. That is, members of the public can continue to view council meetings on YouTube and Facebook, or they may attend in person in the council chamber at Provo City Center. Today's meeting is being held at the Provo Power Building. I remind participants to mute your microphone when not speaking to minimize the potential for background noise in the conversation that you picked up, record it and broadcast for all to hear. Today with us, we have council members Handley, Ellsworth, Shipley, McKay, Whipple, Fillmore and myself Travis Hoven. We also have Mayor Capoussi, Deputy Mayor Isaac Paxman and our Chief Administration Officer, Wayne Parker and several members of council staff and city staff. The opening prayer of your invitation. And I was supposed to do, I'll just call for a volunteer if somebody's comfortable giving us our invitation. Thank you, Kevin.
Our beloved heavenly Father. Gratefully bow our heads before thee this afternoon and invite thy blessing upon our feet. We pray, Father, that thou bless us with the portion of thy Spirit that we might reason well together, that we might act in unity ultimately. Yes, thy blessing upon the citizens of our entire city. Thou bless us, protect us, shield us from the harms that have been experienced in so many parts of the world. We thank thee, Father, for all those who assist us and work with us. And you would thank thee for the privilege of serving in your roles and do so in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen. Although this is a public meeting, only the presenters and those invited by the council may speak or ask questions unless otherwise invited by the chair. Please wait to speak until called on by the council chair. At this time, to start with, the closing meeting has been requested. Brian, Mr. Jones, you want to go ahead and let us know what it's for?
Yes. So, the presentation or a strategy discussion we held regarding disposition of real property, which is one of the priorities for closing the meeting.
Okay, and Melanie Corr, what's your mind?
You still have to vote.
Oh, okay. You can stay for the vote. All right, so do we have a motion to close the meeting? And a second? Any discussion on that motion? Okay, we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote. I will vote yes. Counselor Handley?
Yes.
Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Ellsworth?
Yes.
Counselor Shipley?
Yes.
Counselor McKay?
Yes.
Counselor Fillmore?
Sure.
All right, we'll go ahead and close that meeting.
I'm sorry, I forgot my first.
And Melanie, we'll just poke our head out and let you know I wanted to come back in. I won't forget.
So we can end this one, right?
Yeah, we'll just call them off and see if he's coming.
Says these are for sharing. Says share paths.
Yeah.
Specifically.
This morning, I was working on sewing together a dress that I cut out yesterday and thinking about what I think Elizabeth could be doing in the morning.
These are just nasty. But I couldn't, can't.
Okay. Are you gonna get online or are you gonna come to the power building?
When I was a kid.
That was.
Okay, excellent, thanks.
I like that, I'm right in front of one of the cameras.
She says she's part, I'm good.
Oh, thanks.
Thank you so much.
Catrice said she doesn't like soda, but she likes sugar, so I got her some sugar.
She knows what? That's gonna kill me, isn't it?
Are you not, are you not, you're not Jay Sherritt?
It's killing me, just take it easy.
Good for you.
Being an exception.
Monday through Friday.
These are really good.
Okay, okay, good for you. It's hard to say no in social settings.
I had to burp like that till now.
I do. Yeah. Oh, yeah, that was not good.
She really loves like gun energy.
Eddie? It's lent, like.
Too tart.
What did you give up, though? I mean, specifically?
Sugar.
Okay, got it.
Yeah. And we have already vegetarians, so I see we have that.
Oh, yeah, that would, that would be chappy because her sister-in-law gives that.
Yeah. I did that every year, every year. But now I've known me. I'll. I do that where I feel like 20 hours.
They longer consider themselves after. They just are trying not to participate. And she's like, no, you're gonna go along with me on that.
That's funny.
Well, we can probably get through the point, Melanie, right? And we start from Melanie, we just want to start there.
Wait, they're nerd clusters? I've never seen them. My mom makes chocolate, so for Easter, she made me like a custom chocolate Easter egg with all this stuff. So I'm getting huckleberries.
The Provo Municipal Council, our budget retreat, or what do we call this? Budget priorities? No, council priorities. Budget priorities retreat. All right. Well, we're gonna have a discussion on the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds.
That's the last. Right now, we're doing your priorities.
My bad. Right now, we'll have a discussion regarding the council's budget priorities for fiscal year 2022, 2023, presented by John Magnus, interim council executive director.
No. Okay, it's not budget. One of these are, we're calling them actual items. What we asked the council to come up for the next two years, what would you like us to accomplish as a council and a staff? We asked everybody to get his list, and what we did is went through that list. We kind of broke them out into different areas of the government, Public Works or Parks Parks, and we put them all underneath there. That's what we're discussing. What we'd like to do is come up with 10, no more than 15 items that staff can work on. Some of them will be strictly policy. We need to rewrite some policies and look at how we can accomplish it all. Some may have a funding mechanism we have to look at, how we're gonna fund this over the next two years. And that discussion will lead into our budget priorities, which we will cover in May. So, we'll start the budget cycle, we will start the council's budget priorities. Hopefully learning from this. Me is gonna help you with this. So we alphabetized it all to start off. So, there's no order to this, there's no order of priority, we didn't do anything. We are asking the council to tell us what your priorities are and how would you like to see this? So one of the subtopics we have is the airport. It was recommended, one was to increase destinations, so we'd have more places to fly out of Provo, make it more accessible and more desirable to come down here and use the airport, and then also to increase the carriers. Policy-wise, looking at this, there's not a lot council can do with policy. Monetary-wise, there's probably more things we can do. So that's what the first discussion is, how important this is to you and what do you think about this idea and how would we go about it? And today is just spitball, there's no right or wrong answers. We will take everything you guys say, boil that down to something and come back with your kind of priorities for your, to say yay or nay.
And you're, sorry, you're looking for legislative?
All we have is legislative or budgetary.
Right, right.
So that's all we can control.
And today, are we focusing on legislative and then budget in a couple months?
If it has a budgetary component, we will bring that back in a couple months after we've transferred. But some of this will take us, you know, six, seven months to try to figure out policy, budget issues, try to figure out really how to make this. Some of this will be easy and some will be more difficult. These are probably one of the more difficult ones. We're starting on the hardest one first, I guess, but it's A.
Well, I, I share that objective, but I am skeptical that this is something that legislatively we should do anything about, at least at this point. I don't know if there's a feeling from the administration that they want something from us, but I don't, I don't want to try to fix a problem that ain't broke. I mean, my assumption is we're heading in that direction.
And that could, that is a valid answer. These are just things that were everybody brought out to us, so they're up on, up on the board, no right or wrong answers, and it could be that, hey, this is not the time, this is not the place. Let's let airport finish and see what happens in six months, but who knows?
Well, just as a follow-up to that, I mean, I think it's, it's worth consideration in this room with the people that we've got here to hear from the administration on whether or not there needs to be anything legislatively or budget-wise. In the past, there has been budget, right? I mean, we've been trying to say, look, if you'll, if you'll give us another destination, we'll give you 50 grand to market that. My, my, I, I mean, my naive assumption before I got on the city council was that airlines would not need money to, you know, they would be excited to come to our airport, not, not us handing a check for them to come. And so, what's, what's kind of the sense of that going forward? Do we need to have budget, you know, for that going forward? And is there anything legislative that we need to do? So, just want those answers.
It's interesting, we're in a, we're in an interesting situation right now with the airport. Do you legally? Be careful?
What I would say is, with our new facility, you are going to have new ongoing capital improvements or things like that, and it is possible, we'll, we'll come to you with budget proposals, but it's possible, I'll just flag that it's possible that we're gonna need to, we already subsidized the airport, it's possible that we can continue or expand somewhat to ensure that we can do everything that needs to be done out of, we're wearing a big boy pants and have a nicer facility. So, yeah, I would, I would flag that there may be some need for.
Is that, can you speak to whether or not that's direct incentive to airlines? Or is it just, you have to do certain things to capital improve the airport so that airlines will, or is it both?
Yeah, I, I guess I would say what we're seeing in the industry today is airlines that are trying to find ways to reduce their costs at locating an airport. And that could be, that could take a wide variety of functions. So, I think it's less, the old, the old paradigm used to be write us a check for marketing and, you know, we'll come. The answer, we, you know, at least other airline, airports and airlines are having this discussion around reduce our costs and we will come. And again, the reducing the cost and we will come probably ends up resulting in substantial subsidy. So it's sort of a backdoor approach. And again, I, my suspicion is, as we continue to reach out to potential airline partners, again, based on what we're seeing in the industry, that's likely what we're gonna hear.
So other regional airports are, are fully subsidized by the local municipality or the county to have the opportunity or the right to have airlines just up. So it's not an airline saying, look, we want to be there and you're giving us an opportunity. It's the other way around there. We're asking them to come.
Yeah, it's, in the early stages of a new airport, it does tend to be the first of those, which is.
Please?
For, for example, a really good friend of mine is the city manager of Mesa, Arizona. They right now have a $2 million bounty out there for any airline, any legacy carrier that comes into Mesa Airport and flies one destination five days a week. You make that commitment, we will write you a check for $2 million. They have not takers.
Wow.
And have not had takers for three years. Now, again, the industry, as you know, is coming back out of the pandemic. All you have to do is look at the news and see pilots striking in front of, you know, Salt Lake International. We recognize that the airline industry is in a, you know, in a bit of a, you know, funk right now. And so the question is, you know, the question will always be, what, how do we, how do we match Provo's interests at the airport with an airline's interest at the airport? And that's, that's always gonna be the tricky factor regarding some airline.
So, so between now and the grand opening, is it likely that we'll be making an appropriation as a council, significant appropriation to just make sure we have a carrier that can fiddle those when it opens? Meaning, we don't want to, we don't have a grand opening and not have gates with lights, right? So.
So, yeah, so, yeah, we don't anticipate bringing you anything between now and the airport grand opening at all. Now, again, we'll, we'll see how that develops over time. Mayor said we're, you know, we're doing lots of planning currently, so.
Right, and some of these could be that we will ask the administration for their info. Just because we have it on board doesn't mean we're gonna do it in the council office. We will always reach out to the administration and talk to them as we move forward. If it's a priority for the council, we'll work with it and have the administration to come up with a policy that works for them, works for us and works for the citizens.
I think we're all supportive of the airport succeeding and having more carriers and having more destinations, but I, yeah, I guess like, has been expressed, I don't know that there's something legislatively or budget-wise yet.
Well, probably it's gonna be budget-wise eventually.
Now, you will be hearing next week from Public Works Department, the airport administration about the budget going into next fiscal year. Some of that is having a bigger airport with more gates and more things to manage and more square footage to clean, and there will be, there are some budget impacts, open and budget impacts associated with that. So you'll get, you'll get a peek behind the curtain in terms of what's going on with the new terminal, starting in the new fiscal year, but.
And realistically, that intra, that, that inter-local loan that we have, it's 500,000 from the general fund, we just, we just could assume that's gonna be there for?
For, for a while. Again, I, you know, it's, it's just hard to say. If you look at a well-established airport, and my friend in Mesa has a long-time airport, they have one airline and, and one airline only, and that's not a place they want to be. I don't think it's a place we want to be. And so, but if, but if you look at a, you know, again, variety of regional airports you look at over time, would suggest that once there is a proof of concept of a critical mass, for example, if, if you get an airline that comes in and offers a Las Vegas flight, we'll know pretty fast how quickly legacy carriers will be interested in talking to us about the legacy carrier flight to Las Vegas. So again, in, in some ways, it's a, it's a process of trying to grow the base to the point where now, you know, an American or United, you know, or somebody flying their flag wants to come and offer connections to a hub airport. I think, again, it's just, it's just gonna take a little time to prove the concept.
I call it grown hands for the staff when we talk about it. We're growing up and it needs some bright hands.
Catrice, do you?
Sorry, one more quick question here. Over there. In other regional airports, is there more or less county participation, or is it always a municipality taking the lead on that?
It's, it's all over the map. So, some, some airports are county airports, some airports are like Salt Lake International, that's an airport authority, so it's separately funded. Ogden's looked for years trying to create a regional airport authority that would draw tax base from Roy and South Ogden and West Haven and everybody surrounding the airport. But the vast majority of that started right as a.
Had you explored and attempted that at the time?
Well, you know, they, they did contribute four and a half, four and a half million dollars for the terminal building, and, and so they're, they're obviously very interested in what we're doing at the airport, yeah. And so, you know, so how that translates to the future, I don't know, and I think there's a fair reasonable chance we could talk to Luke's one commissioner, you know, starting in January, so maybe there's not a opportunity to reiterate that special.
And Breeze is still coming, right? Breeze Airlines still send off?
It never, it never happens.
Why did I think they have?
Reminded it pay for something. We did see one news report that was there.
Yeah, there was a news report, it was misplaced and that didn't come from us or from the Marines or anybody, you know. So, yeah, there's, there's no.
Okay, well, it was canyon enhancements, this is kind of two-part one. Let's start with the gravel pit. So we have a big gravel pit. What do we want to, you know, what do we want to do next year? Do we want to clean it? Do we want to rezone it? I mean, there's.
Which one is it? Is it the one right?
Right, the two in the canyon, it's the.
On the right-hand side?
Yeah. So, that was one that I just put out there as a gravel pit. So, you know, what can the council do about it? We have, we have, we can zone, our best, best tool that we have. If you wanted to set up the park, that would be monetary funds. So these are kind of, this is one of the things about it. What is the gravel pit a priority for next years? Do you want to start making?
Own it.
I'm not sure, who, who owns that?
So that was a question, because there's actually three gravel pits. There's one right at the Mount on University, we don't own that one. There's the, it has been Turley's in the past, but the city does own a piece of ground that's below the shooting range that could be a gravel pit, it's not an active gravel pit, so I'm not sure which one you're.
Turley's adjacent to that.
Yeah, I don't know if he still owns it, but that could be, is that correct? Maybe it's our.
The city owns that, but.
Yeah, and Turley owns the other. And that one's kind of around the corner, deeper into the canyon, so and there's one just south of that, more.
The two on the entrance, the two on the entrance.
There, there is a legislative issue that probably needs to be addressed in order for anything to happen with gravel pits, because as I recall, our critical hillside overlay zone had a limits of disturbance rule on it that gravel pits would violate. So there's, there's sort of a glitch in the law right now, if I'm remembering correctly, that would create a problem for a gravel pit to rehabilitate into some other type of development. So we had had the intention of going back to address that particular issue. At the time, Mr. Turley was, had raised that concern with us, and I had asked him for some suggestions because he was presumably wanting to do something with it, and I didn't know what he was wanting to do, and he never, never suggested anything, so I kind of let it sit for now. But if, if our property or any other gravel pit area were to be rehabilitated, we'd have to, if, if I'm remembering correctly, we'd have to have some sort of legislative fix for the critical hillside overlay zone to allow it.
I guess, I guess my thought on gravel pits was that my, we're pretty few to know this, and it's a creative ideas, what we can do with it in terms of park retail. Right now, it's kind of an eyesore, it could be a really nice entrance way into the city.
Is that captured in the scope of the canyon's plan? The canyon's foothills plan?
I don't think it's this specific.
No, but I can find out, we can look at, we can look at, that, that plan and see what they're doing, because we also have the entrance.
It would definitely be captured in the entrance.
Yeah, okay. The one thing, if I could add to the canyon enhancements, is Slate Canyon?
Slate Canyon, I think Slate, yeah.
Maybe it's on a different list, but it's on a park canyon enhancement.
Slate comes up in the parks.
Okay.
I was gonna marry these two, and they're like.
Oh, okay.
So, that's why they're still kind of archetypal.
No, isn't there gravel pit that's south of 800? And I was wondering if that would be affected by the new road and light you're gonna put in for the Ryan Smith property as you come down?
Were you talking about 5,600 north? University.
That's a gravel pit?
There's, there's the little one that, yeah, there's a little something like on the east side, yeah. It's little, but someone.
There's an excavation that happened there.
Yeah, we don't know who did that or why or what.
This one is just the, on the entrance, it's through Provo Canyon, the gravel pits up there. You know, in the next two years, do you guys want to try to do something with that or just let, you know, let the administration look through and see what happens? Is it a priority for you guys?
I defer to the entrances plan. I mean, for me, like, I think, I think there'll be some short-term, there always are with these plans, right? They have some short-term things we can tackle.
Long-term.
Yeah, I'm, I'm interested to see how they.
Okay, so we can clarify whether this is entrance or can, I was assuming this was the foothills and canyon's plan, per view.
I'll find out which one is gonna happen there, and if it's on, I mean, I'll bring it back.
But there might be, there might be issues regarding canyons, I mean, canyons and disturbances and things that would make it most relevant to.
Right, we'd have to clean up that line, yes, to, to make sure, whatever they, whatever the bank says, or whatever they're advising us to do, make sure.
What I don't understand about gravel pits is, what's the point at which it's, it's maxed out, its utility as such? I mean, when you look at the gravel pit, both of them, you know, you have electric poles that are standing on little pyramids, and that, that, I, I don't know from an engineering point of view if that's, makes any sense, but it seems to me you're, you're looking at, you're looking at its last throes, unless we don't do anything about it, are there risks that we're even more vulnerable to damage if, if something were to happen at landslide or something like that? So I, I just, I just don't know where, where the point of, okay, we're done, maximize, you've maximized your profit here.
Lifespan of the.
Yeah, we'd like, we'd like to rehabilitate this area. I don't, I don't know any, but I would like to explore that.
I think the inactivity of those pits says something about their market. Well, cost analysis doesn't justify it.
Are they inactive or they?
They're pretty well deep-located.
So John mentioned a couple of things, you know, the property limitations, when it's some of it, you know, slope that you're talking about groundwater, also state regulations can also limit what they can, can't do eventually.
I just have gravel pits for plants, so I'm pretty well versed in that role.
I mean, basically, does, does Provo need that gravel pit? If it sets a turnish pitch, we're gonna wind up.
From this perspective or our perspective?
So what would you say? Far and close to different perspectives.
I think there's some interest in, from, from the owners of the gravel pits continue to use it. From, from the city's use, I, I think, you know, there's not, I mean, we, from time to time, we use it for storage of material. We do haul small quantities from time to time out of the, out of the city property, but it's not, I wouldn't consider it an active gravel pit at all.
Yeah, point of amounts of post-transportation costs are not that bad. Come down.
The trick with this was, is that, it's kind of brushing off the dust on this conversation from some time ago, what worried me was creating an ordinance that actually rewarded people for creating gravel pits, right?
We wouldn't want to do that.
Was that? Of course we wouldn't want to do, that's what I'm saying, what worried me was that it'd be, if you want to rehabilitate gravel pits, great, but can we, can we create an ordinance that doesn't justify the degradation so that it then can be cashed in as, as an improvement? That's a tough thing, and I'd like to try to figure out.
And legislatively, we can look at that, that should be something we can look at, to see, see, disincentivize the gravel pits so they don't reopen, and we'll be trying to look back on that.
Because we just don't want them to sit there forever either.
Right, well, it could be the, even if you disincentivize the land, it's worth something. You have to find out the secondary uses of it, what can come in after a gravel pit, how much work would it take to rehabilitate, to actually put something there? Or if you incentivize them to turn it over to a new space. So, that's something, you know, that, that's something we can look at, legislatively, that would be pretty easy for us to look at. If, you know, you look at the one gravel pit we own, you want to rehabilitate, then there would have to be monetary costs. And then we'd have to look at how much would it cost to rehabilitate it, what it would look like. So, let us look at legislative side first, and then we can give you some, some ideas what, what we can do. Provo Canyon itself, I think, the canyon plans, the interesting thing, let's see what they come up with, we'll follow the next one.
Do we know, there's, Mayor, do you know anything about the extension of the Provo River Trail that's going all the way up to the top of the canyon?
I do, I.
Is that gonna get us any kickback benefits or?
It's so exciting because, you know, the trail ends and then it goes into Wasatch County, so I had to speak with the Wasatch, where it's taken, and he helped me with this as well. Went to speak with Wasatch County and then speak to their council and ask them, because they would have to come in with their side of it, right? And it passed, and we got it to pass, so the, I think in the next two years, we'll be done, the connection all the way up to almost the city, they'll be able to be there with us. It's a huge win for our community.
It'll mean more users, may have more degradation in the trail over time, is that?
So, we'll. It'll be a big trail from Vivian Park to the base up and around to the dam, that'll connect into the, I guess that's the north or west side of Deer Creek, which will then take them to Charleston and the state park. It'll be a paved path, it's just really expensive because of the limited, from the river's edge to the trail to the mountains, but it will be a paved path, UDOT and MAG and several other funding sources.
So we're welcoming on it, and that was kind of the, the. So we're welcoming on it and that was kind of the, the deal was if I go back to this UDOT, MAG and all of our friends who are like pushing us to, you know, Mayor, come on, get, get on board, come and present. Um, they kept saying as good as the new piece looks, I want our piece to stay that good.
Yeah.
Problem is, you know, it Provo's ownership ends at a certain point, then it becomes county property. So you'll probably be able to tell when Provo's ends and then it becomes county, because usually they're, it's visible. That you've been down on the one down, you know, gone down to the lake and taken off all the, you get the county, it changes, right, Dave? You can tell when the county peaks over. But we'll keep, I mean, it's, it's our most used park.
Okay, so next one, we kind of community development, because that has nothing to do with community services, so, uh, one thing that was brought up was the neighborhood program. Uh, just to let you guys know, uh, the community's been working on it, we should have something rolling out uh next month. The ordinance will come to town, touch it on it. And when we do, the one thing that we're gonna have included in it is that at the twelve-month mark, uh, the community will come back together and review the program, do a program assessment on it and make sure that it's actually meeting its goal, its purposes. So that one is kind of, it's kind of an over, it is gonna happen, we're very close, so we'll bring that back. Uh, the general plan has a, a diversity and inclusionary committee. Um, with the general plan, where it is right now, with the questioner going out, with the state requiring that modern housing element and water element now. Uh, there's talk about taking a step back, including those two pieces, so we don't have to open and back up next year to come in compliance, so it's gonna be slowed down quite a bit. But there's no reason we can't pull that out of the general plan and start. If council would like to see a diversity and inclusion committee created, we could do the legislative work, do the research and see what it would be like. And bring that forward uh as a separate, independent of the general plan. So that would be, in the next two years, would you guys like to see that to be created?
Yeah, I think that's a simple thing that we should do.
Okay.
What's our goal with that?
That would. Yes, uh, well, part of it, trying to drop us down to the bottom line, we talked about creating unity and social capital. Uh, social capital is, you know, the interconnections between our neighbors, our friends, our friends' friends, there's, there's close connections and broad connections. And um, we would like to, you know, strengthen that in our community, make sure that we have that social capital in place.
I'm curious to learn from the council, do you see the diversity and inclusion uh group as a commission? That is ongoing, kind of in perpetuity, or as a committee that's ad hoc for a year or two? Is it under the mayor, is it under the council? Um, I, in my mind, I thought it was a commission, right, and it can make recommendations, or they could organize projects, or they could be this kind of ongoing sustaining advisory board and uh kind of daylight some of the issues that we don't always see. Um, but I'm curious if there's alternative models that are supported.
Well, I noticed the mayor stepped outside, I don't know if other check can speak on her behalf, but I know that like going back a ways to summer twenty twenty, um, you know, a lot of concern about uh diversity in the community and people feeling represented, represented, she had talked about sort of creating some sort of neighborhood committee of uh diverse leaders in the community. I would, I would like, I mean, I see it, this is maybe two different uh objectives, one is and I don't know if it's better suited yet in my mind, under the administration or under the council or some sort of joint thing. But there are two, two areas, one is the, the practices of, of the city itself as a group of employees and elected chairs, you know, what, what are we doing, can we do, what are we doing, what can we improve on? To make uh our, our practices in our community more inclusive and more respectful, more aware of our diversity. And then the other, I think, is, uh, which is maybe related, is how well are we doing, this goes back to even the neighborhood program, how well are we doing engaging citizens in Provo? In every, in every demographic, you know, how, how well are we doing? That's not only a process question, but it's also sort of a representative question, you know, people um, in our community see themselves reflected in the city, do they feel like it's their city government? Do they feel like they're heard and are responded to when they, when they have concerns? So I, I, I just, I know we have a lot of areas of improvement and I know that the only way you can improve it is if you do it intentionally. Um, there's tons of research on this with regard to governments and businesses, universities. Um, and it doesn't have to be, you know, people worry that it sounds like it's a divisive thing, it's actually obviously intended to be the opposite of divisive, it's uh, but, but you, you can't, you can't include, help people feel more included in, in a culture that's dominated by one group, whatever that group might be, if there's not an intentional effort to try to compensate for that um, in some ways, right? So for example, if it's predominantly English-speaking community, but there's a significant minority that's Spanish-speaking. You know, what kinds of efforts is, that are being made to communicate in Spanish, for example? So they're just, they're just things like that, that a, a committee that's sort of commissioned to be paying attention to those issues, I think could do a lot of good for the city.
Right, I just got back from Manhattan, two weeks ago, the whole conference was about inclusionary. So I just actually made some contacts with some professors in different schools, um, and I actually talked about Provo because you're right, we are majority Caucasian, majority of the S, that can self-create, publish, create this committee. And they gave me some ideas on how to work around that, those issues too. So, yeah, there's a lot of research and we'll, we can dive into that. And again, it will be always presented back to the council, these are your options, this is, you know, go A, this is, you know, this is the pitfall, this might be, B, these are pitfalls. So we'll, we'll try to lay that out as best as we can to you guys to make those decisions. Uh, that's something that we could do relatively quick.
And I'll just add really quickly, that research also shows that decision-making is always better when it's, it involves a more diverse group of voices. You know, in, in terms of business practices and government practices, that, that seems like it's in our interest to be careful about that.
Okay. Well, we can work on that, so we can get to, and everything will always come back to council, whatever we develop, always come back to you guys for your input and your decisions and how you guys wanna proceed and everything, and we'll give you the best information we can get.
To your, to your question, Shannon, I think, I think initially it might need to be an ad hoc committee and then to evaluate whether or not it needs to be an ongoing commission, to evaluate whether or not we need two parts to it, to Mr. Haney's point. So I, I, I think it makes sense to have a committee right away, looking at, you know, what we do with this, you know, to and, and I, yeah.
It makes sense to do the research, because we're in the budget season, I remember.
Yeah.
We're in budget season, so as soon as budget season's over, we can start diving into the research. Because we will, we will use best practices in other cities, we'll use all the academic research. Other than this, published the rest of the years on this topic, and there's a lot, there has been a lot published on this topic.
Can you say what you said earlier about the general plan?
The general plan has this in there.
I know, but you said something.
All being delayed. So the general plan, the state now is requiring us to have a modern housing element, a modern housing element in our general plan and a water resource element. They are not currently in our general plan. So, we don't have to do and write this right, right now, but we do have to do that in, in the near future to come in compliance. So while we're currently rewriting it, we might as well step back and see how we can have those two sections in, so we're not in the process again next year. Might as well just.
I just hope it's not gonna delay, I mean, this is a priority for me anyway. I'd love, I don't want.
It's, it's.
It's going to be really delayed.
Not really.
I believe it will be, I mean, they're doing a survey, they're writing two more chapters, it's, it's gonna be a while.
You, you're probably looking at, probably in the year if you'll see it. Just because of the, the two new chapters that we have to do. The house, the modern housing element plan, uh, we'll just take our modern housing plan that we submit to the state and incorporate that into it. And then we'll have to work with the department to come up with more resources. They will.
Don't the station area, station area plans have to be part of that as well? No, not in the general plan, okay.
Just those two elements gotta add it, I know.
We're planning to be done at six.
What?
We're planning to be done at six.
Where, yes, we're, we're gonna be done by six, even if we don't finish, we can go through it. Uh, unity and social capital, I think that will come out of diversity and the city council program. Okay, economic development, one thing that was talked about is making the downtown, downtown areas more pedestrian-friendly. Uh, whatever that is, going down to one lane, blocking it off, taking everybody up to one hundred north.
I'm always perplexed when you park in the middle while you have to walk on plants and dirt, that will never, I'll never do that.
Um, I think it's because Center Street's a pedestrian mall, so you should technically be able to walk down the middle of the street. But that's also.
Yeah, but that's not part of it, so you just walk on plants and dirt.
Yeah, but we've got the, the list of options and everything from T-Bac, um, that.
Through a thing, yeah.
Downtown Business Alliance has looked at and everything, so this would be a matter of just allocating money to do it and my understanding was that they wanted to try like one year with the reverse forty-five degree angle parking or some of these other changes, is that right?
I was just doing minutes on this the other day and there.
I thought their first one was the entry.
There were some things they suggested about their temporary to try out during the summer before you make expensive investments.
There was about a three or four month test period.
Right.
We have some test for, so.
The parklets is part of it, right?
Yeah.
So these are, it's, it could be something that, you know, after this month, after the, the summer's over, we can come back and look at it. And they, yes, the data, and then you guys can decide, uh, in the next two years, how important is this to you? What do you wanna, you know, if you wanna spend money on it, what do you wanna do? Um, there's a couple, there's different models, like, so we can drop it down to one lane, or they can drop it down to no lane, so they can go walking, like, two pedestrian streets.
We can't do that. Not yet.
So, they'll come back.
Okay.
And uh, do those things, but those things, if you guys need to think about when they start coming back to you, it's what, what do you want? And do you guys want that as a party for next few years? Or is it something we'll just wait for the administration to come back to us and we'll follow wherever we want it?
Yeah, I think doing infrastructure things to make it more friendly, but also doing more event-type things is, is helpful as well. So, yeah.
Um, then there's the, for BYU for the incubator, uh, this is, those projects, he's a big fan of the incubator, I can't even say the word now. But not just the incubator, but also after the next step, after they actually start proof, proof of project, they can actually start developing whatever, developing, um, we don't want them to leave the city, so we need to find space for them, so they can take the next step.
Just so you all know, there are four different, basically, tech incubators, let's say it out. The, two are working pending, but you've got, of course, the startup building, does everything. You've got Kill coming into the, what's it called, the mix, they changed the name on that. Kill, Kill is potentially a big deal. We've also got uh one arm of the medical school people, Rock Mountain University. Uh, Mr. Nielsen, who's a visionary kind of guy, wants to really grow big into biotech. Uh, maybe taking more space in the mobile tower, the old mobile tower, and tying that into the medical school. Uh, you've got BYU and UBU looking for outlets for their technology. These are all marvelous economic development opportunities for us. And then there's, there's another really big one, which I can't speak on. I know, the layer of that airway, maybe you feel that might be premature, but there's another really big tech incubator that are coming. It's a lot of potential, which we need to keep under wraps here. Okay, but, but the point is, it's a lot of economic development activity. And one of the challenges for us would be not just to encourage the incubators, but the finality to keep them there. And once we, once we incubate them, they start to be successful, we've gotta have places for them to, to house their employees and do their thing.
To hatch.
After they hatch, yeah, now, after they hatch, a lot of people want to run, run away to other cities. Um, so the next two years, a lot of that would probably be.
I think we're addressing that with some office space, we're doing, right?
Yeah, I mean, we have built a lot of, a lot of office space, but yeah. If you wanted to go down that road, we'd have to look at legislatively what we can do to, um, incentivize. I think there's probably not really mature.
Because between those council members, I probably worked closely with Keith Laurie and, and everybody else, we've got a really good team there. They, they really are creating. The initial initiative that you see from them is Provo advantage, that they're really starting to trump with that, it's effective. We have a good team there.
I, I guess I'm just not clear what, I mean, is this something that we would just wait for a signal that there's a need for a legislative uh assistance with something, or is this something where we proactively, that we should be proactively doing, it seems like.
That, that would be a decision, that would be a decision the council would make.
We can't see the difference between.
Correct, if you're talking about bringing money to save.
The only proactive element that Keith has in mind is furthering economic development fund. So that you have money in place to take advantage of opportunities when they come. A prime example might be this development from here on, Fort South, they have a music store where somebody has bought up most of the block, but on the corner there's a pawn shop. And the idea would be if you had an appliance on a telephone, buy a pawn shop. And then get some value from that with the developers, so you got the whole block instead of having an eyesore on the corner. But there are other opportunities like that.
Isn't that what the redevelopment agency does?
No, they, they, they have really thrown lots of money at things.
And they have to work in the project area or, I don't know, but we're talking about being able to step beyond what the RDA can do. To be proactive, you can probably have some money at it, to be reactive, to just make sure that our ordinance and our codes uh are flexible enough so they come to us, and they, you can find a spot.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I don't want to take too much more time on this one issue, but it, it seems to me like, I, I can, it would be helpful to have certain uh zoning and or uh housing decisions flagged if they have some relevance to this question, for example. I mean, I know, I know Tom Taylor's been talking to uh some of us about single bedroom uh laws, basically, for example, you know, where he feels that that would help him with the startup projects, the, the kind of clientele he has needs or would want housing that our current laws don't allow. So, you know, when things like that come before us, it would be nice to know when it has some impact on on economic development generally or on, on this particular issue of the compares.
Yeah, we can, we can definitely work on that, we can definitely look at codes, we can also look and see what's out as best practices in cities that have uh incubators and see what they have done with housing, how they, how they work with it. Um, let's skip what I said, let's go to the west side commercial development, that one keeps coming up to a lot of people, uh, grocery store. We do have that money set aside, the legacy CRP funds, it was a million dollars, right? There's a million dollars set aside, uh, firstly, we can't make the grocery stores come. So, other than that million dollars is just proactive, I don't think there's much.
That was over a year ago, right?
Yeah, maybe the legacy, I think that was last year, we'll come up on here.
So what other than having given a million dollars to the problem that we're talking about here?
Yeah, I know, that seems.
Well, it, it always comes up, I mean, because it is an issue into west side development, the grocery, like a grocery store. Um, problem is, a million dollars, we can't work with that, it's just gonna be rooftops until there's enough density on that side.
Did we do a study, weren't we gonna do, wasn't the city gonna do a study?
We're gonna do a housing.
We're doing housing, huh?
Well, I thought the city was gonna do a study, feasibility study or something and then.
Yeah, we, we contracted with a consulting firm uh to provide us with software and uh details to be able to do some very targeted uh market analysis for them, we have done some of that on the west side, we've done some of them all, and so that, there's, there's data out there we're sharing with developers, grocers, detailers.
Really, well, your description, like, there's a lot of this to come, like, it's just.
What, what was the million dollar intended for then, like?
What was it intended to be? So we, we put a hundred thousand dollars in the economic development operating budget, which was used to secure the software and do this consulting process. And so, so that, that money spent, uh, and, and in use right now, as we've talked with three dealers in all locations around Provo. The nine hundred thousand dollars is in the way.
The nine hundred thousand dollars is in the legacy C R P fund, and was really designed to help maybe offset some infrastructure costs associated with location grocery store. So it wasn't really a direct credit check to Albertson's or whomever, but it was, it was to say, gosh, if we need to do a utility line extension, we need to put in a traffic signal, or we need to do some of those kinds of things to ease the process of them coming into Provo, that's what that is designed to be.
Have we put a deadline on Smiths?
We have not, and, um, and there, there are a variety of good reasons for that, there may come a point in time at which a deadline would be useful, but as you know, we, uh, we did rezone this property on West Center, uh, away from retail. Uh, I think that, that kinda sent a message, we're continuing to explore with them and with others about potential locations on the west side. It's a, it's a weekly conversation.
So even though it's a priority, there's not a lot we can do right now, I mean, million dollars to help develop costs is pretty good, I'm paying it. I just, bottom, we're gonna try to be reactive, when they come to us, if they need something else, we'll have to deal with that, so. Last one is Provo Town Center redevelopment, that, I know that's important to all the council members. Best thing I can think of you guys look at is you definitely don't want piecemeal, you don't want them coming in and trying to rezone pieces of it, you want a comprehensive plan on it. Best thing we can do, because they described properties, try to create a text name, tell them what you're looking for, telegraph out there. Get in front of them and say, this is what we want, there's plenty of projects around the nation where they have taken old malls and rehabilitated them. Um, into something perfect.
That's something that Bill and I had talked about, and I think there's probably a draft of a draft on my computer somewhere. We can resurrect that and start circulating that, uh, with staff and bring it back to the council. But I think it was like one page kind of emphasizing, uh, commercial and retail and true mixed use, not just you know, eighty percent housing and creating a pedestrian, uh, kind of a pedestrian environment that is conducive to people walking from medical school to town center and across university to the, some of the amenities there, like the gym, be a tragedy if you have to get in your car to go from your house at the mall to the gym on the other side of the university, but, um, an intense statement is, uh, there's a draft of a draft somewhere and we can, we can bring that back and.
Money is handy for the economic development, because the problem is, is the owner, that, uh, tell me if I got this right. That we keep wanting him to give us a, a general plan, a larger vision to do, he won't do it. Uh, he keeps retiring Keith calls him, it's, uh, what can you do for him?
I, I think that is the case, but I think we should anchor with our desires so that we have something to grade it against it and when that appears, and and so that way we're not just choosing between, you can have this old rundown mall, or you can have exactly what I'm telling you you're going to have. I think we need to dictate what we'd like to see there.
Might be helpful, do you think, helpful counterproductive stage?
I think, well, I think it would be helpful, I don't think it would be counterproductive. The, you know, I think the reality of mall redevelopment is tricky in current. And there's a lot of these parts, and, and so again, I think expressing your desires is a really good thing. Like, it's also really important to recognize that it may be tough to get there, uh, in current environment, so so again, expressing desires makes sense, be willing to be a little flexible as they start their redevelopment process, so I can do some announcements.
Or strategically word it strong enough that they look for a suitor to self, to, to just sell out from under it, because it's a group that's just trying to raise money, and the way you raise money right now is you do residential. And so they're gonna wanna piecemeal it to raise money the way they want to. So if you word something strongly enough, they'll just say, well, we can't go to our investors and raise money, so either we sit on it, which never is the right answer for a group like that, they're not making enough money on it to sit on it, they gotta start doing something with it, some corner.
Probably, uh, Shannon, the R D A has a role player, you know, in terms of the sentence.
Yeah.
So it should be nice just to move that, move that role a bit, maybe judging with general state.
Yeah.
Uh, that's something we can work on pretty quick, um, I don't know, I did work with a group called Crusoe, they took old malls of California and rehabilitated them, they put the residential on top, and that's how they paid for everything, hired, uh, the penthouse was rented ten thousand dollars. Which even the neighbors there, it's really extravagant, but there are groups out there that can do this. They do this project very well, maybe we do want these people, so, or look to even a partner who's done this before, but we'll work on a text statement.
Well, even Amazon has been taking them and doing warehouse, the rail and the retail around it, housing around it.
Um, we'll work on that, uh. So the general plan, so we have the, uh, the gateways, the things that we're not covering are some of the utilities, um, coming, well, we haven't seen the plans, and, uh, the South University, I guess that we could buy them.
By the mall?
Mall, yeah, um, what do you want, you know, what do you want, try to, part of that bleeds into traffic discussion. Are those priorities for the next few years for you guys, or you just want to let the administration, or see how the mall plays out, or how traffic patterns play out, and we can just let this one slide until, uh, someone else can along or.
I think we're already committed to doing some studies and recommendations.
Right, we do have the, the gateways plan, but I, did they cover the mall? I don't remember, I thought that was South Street.
You know, if the mall gets.
I, I, I think it's. I had hoped that the gateways would have included Southern State Street, and if not.
Can include whatever we decided.
Sure, we haven't.
Sure.
If we haven't rented scope yet, but.
Basically, we have four gateways, right, I mean, number one, I think, targeted West Center. So, then South State Street, South University, and Provo Canyon, those are our four gateways.
Yeah, but then when you're at university, there's a university gateway, and there's also an eighteen sixty south gateway, because it's almost the same, but it's not. But the, I think the point there is that, when I think about South State Street, when I think about South University, I think about pedestrian safety and connectivity and beautification, like, let's just make this a nicer place so that.
Let's, then let's make sure.
So design standards.
Design standards, yeah, all of them.
When they do, when they do the, uh, the gateway spots, make sure that those streets are included in it.
Yeah.
So that, that still work.
Can I ask a question about the general plan generally? And that is, um, going back to this issue of the delay. I know you've gotten us started on the foothills and canyon's plan, it sounds like a great plan to get started. I just, it's a huge priority for me to just move this whole process forward and have it done as soon as possible. I'm, I'm just asking a question, do other counselors feel the same, is this something that I mean, I, I don't know what decision points are gonna make any difference as to whether or not it happens within a year, or whether it's less than a year, or it's more than a year. But I would like to see the general plan passed as soon as possible, and I would like those subsidiary plans to, to follow right on the heels of the general plan.
We talked about this maybe two months ago, when the staff was presenting this idea about doing a survey to statistically validate the general plan gains, and I said, um, let's get it done because it's ninety-five percent there, and we're not gonna like, not everyone is going to like everything in the general plan, we all like eighty, ninety percent of it, we can move forward a little bit, and the, the council and the, I think the mayor's office wanted to do, maybe it was just the mayor's office, I don't know, wanted to do this statistically valid survey to.
Right, but I mean, is that, I don't, I don't see why that has, has to slow it down more than three months or something.
Well, the survey's going out right now, the survey is going out right now.
Did they already send it out? Because some of those questions were really unusual.
They're asking us for it.
No, no, the, no, that was the final survey, you guys saw the next product.
Oh, well, some of those questions were.
I sat, yeah, I know, I sat in on that, I have, I did polling for twelve years.
The question was, do you want equity in your home or something?
Equity, do you wanna preserve the equity in your home, that means, do you wanna preserve the value of your home above and beyond the loan amount?
I see, okay, that was not intuitive, I thought we were talking about equity in a different way.
I loved your comments, I thought they were.
I must be, I must be, because I, we had silly conversations about equity.
Yeah, no.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, I did chuckle, because I, I, I was like, is she being serious, or is she being?
I don't know, I'm not associating value as a whole.
Sorry, I mean, I, I, I guess the question is, it, it is, is it, is it safe to assume that we all agree that we have a, have as a high priority to get through the general plan soon?
I, yeah, I, you know, I was passing, I was passing this for us. And as soon as we can go get it back, um, they're gonna start looking at.
Is there anything that keeps us from doing those two other subplans that we need, the, the state required ones, can we not? Can design workshop not be working on those right now, I mean?
I think we've been talking about doing those internally, because we already do a moderate housing plan, uh, it would be very easy to
drop.
Drop it into the general plan, and we need to, they're gonna talk, we're gonna talk, Dave Decker, like, the water requirements to see.
Just seems like that would delay it, if we're waiting for the statistical information before we get to those two, I just think we should be working on those two, have it done.
And I'm happy to fund a design workshop to accelerate those.
I, yeah, I'll, I'll talk to, uh, to Bill and see what they're planning to do, I know, I had this conversation with Bill yesterday about the housing element. They wanna back up, and they wanna create a housing element for them. So one of the actions will be housing, because that's how we put, we call it housing, so if the executive housing, oh, we're down below them housing.
And I, and I wanna be clear, I'm not trying to, you know, ran through an inferior product, I don't, I don't think any, any of us wants that. It's just that we made a decision to spend no small amount of money, no, to get consultants to accelerate this process, and now we're slowing it way down.
Yes.
That's frustrating.
Right, uh, I did look at the, the data that they used for the original general plan. Sicily was so invalid, uh, they didn't correct anything, they didn't control for anything. There's no way we can use it, I mean, our rate would be ninety-five, that's our maximum. It's useless, it's just standing there.
I'm glad to do the survey, but they're taking the time.
So, um, it should be pretty quick.
George, I was, uh, watching this.
Any general matter I create, I just shouldn't be, they're done, right? Yeah, but to Shannon's comment, it's not anywhere near ninety-five percent.
The draft?
A lot of concerns about that draft, a lot of concerns, a lot of concerns about the assumptions that were made about priorities came largely from. A bit biased, and so, yeah, I think the survey is a necessary thing, we'll see what it takes us.
Okay, I think it's a confusing process for me and probably for some of the public, because the administration really ran that process with the consultants, and now it's the administration that wants to correct that process. So it's, it's confusing.
I think it just wants to have sense of a little more validity. Some of the priorities. We're overemphasized, and we're underemphasized.
Would have been great to get there at twenty-five percent, so.
So, let's just let the administration do their thing.
Can I give you a quick, it's, one point, it's, to know where it is, if I, they, they send all the stuff to me. Um, like, so, I did talk to Bill Friday yesterday about putting in a housing element now. A standalone element that will discuss all housing.
And I had asked about the housing element like twelve months ago, and then six months ago, and they said it was completely satisfactory, and so it's, this is a weird process.
Yeah, well, some people don't feel it's, we've had some counselors say that they weren't happy with the housing part of it. It seemed like the housing element is spread out to the whole document.
Yeah, which I said.
We're gonna pull it all back into one section, make it its own standard section, so we understand the housing policies in the general plan. Going for, I mean, all the general housing policies, housing, executive housing, all the down the burn, all the housing. We'll have all of those come out, so you have to jump through the black, put it together, so it's not as confusing or ridiculous. A lot of that is what we're gonna be looking at, is trying to repage it, put pieces back, and it really makes sense.
John, can I just add one thing to your section five on general plan?
Yeah, we ought to have a sub paragraph of the case. About that sub paragraph from River of Light. Yeah, all those plans will be, will be indexed, and same with our, our fire plan, our carpet plan, all the other plans that we put out, the city does, will be in there. And the one discussion I did ask, and Bill was looking into it, there's no hazard plan, but I think what we passed two weeks ago. Yeah, that may, that may work for us, since I have a plan, um, because we have fires, flooding, and look patient if there's a, like, the west side, why take a side while the west side's shaking? So, uh, I'll keep you guys posted on what's happening with that, and we'll make sure that those, when they do the scope of work for the entrances, that all the entrances are covered, we'll send that out to test.
But, but your understanding is that planning right now is not stalling for the survey, they could, they're working on the housing chapter, they're working on the water chapter right now.
Well, they're, yeah, they have to reach out, they're, they're working on that part, so I just hope they do it. They're gonna try to do all those two pieces in-house, instead of working it out, that's our contractor. And then the thing is, uh, when, when the council asks, after the general plan is passed, we're gonna have to go through the codes, make sure our codes are aligned with the general plan. Uh, which is something to be. Ask Bill, the administration tasks them with that.
Um, can I bring up a point there, when I've talked to Bill Pepperoni about that in the past, probably six to twelve months ago, he said it needs to be done post-general Plan, and it's most efficient and effective to do it by having a consultant do it, otherwise it takes years. So we should think about that budget over the next few years.
Change it to the form, a different kind of code, change it to form-based code.
Maybe in some places, I don't know, I mean, we'd have to have that, we'd have to have that conversation, but it hasn't been well applied in Utah, and.
Bill told me you wanted that.
So, if they do, they would bring it forward, now some of the grants were talking about.
So now you're giving sixty-seven explanation for the form-based plan.
So you wipe out all the, the underlying zoning and codes, you just have a square piece of property, and you say, I want a three-story building with all these designs, every design scanner, windows, setbacks, trees, um, the finishes, what kind of materials they're using, slope on the roof, everything, you design the building, and then whatever can fit in the building is all.
You can put anything anywhere, it just has to look a certain way.
Those more design standards?
Yes, yeah, so it might be the nicest darn chaco you've ever seen, um, you could put it anywhere, but it has to look just like this.
Yeah, and the problem with that, I did a project, but they did that, um, put a daycare in, and then they got an application for a vault shop, right next door.
Ooh, nice.
No underlying code, not illegal. So the city quickly scrapped their design standards for their, uh, form-based codes.
Worked well in other places.
Right, but there is, there, there's always that possibility, so that, what you see people have drifted towards to now is really strong design standards, and still even some of the other land codes, they're likely to keep in that new system.
Kind of like a mix of both then?
A little bit.
It's more flexibility and higher design standards.
But Bill, but Bill wants to start over, isn't he?
There was a. It wasn't start over, but I, I don't think that we could do it on a hundred percent form-based. There was a presentation to the council in a work meeting a few years ago about form-based code, where they gave a pretty detailed, like, explanation, just kind of comparing and like how, what our land use sections of code look like compared to like how those types of things would be regulated, so we can sum that out. I can find a link to that.
And there's actually a couple of it's on.
The, the point is, I think we need some budget for that this year or next year.
Yeah, he said it had to be done by consultant.
Okay.
It was like a hundred thousand.
One quick question on the additional chapters for the general plan, so you talked about doing that in-house and going to our, our departments. Will there be any public input to those additional chapters, or need there be public input on those?
Um, Wayne, I, I don't know what you guys plan to do for public input at this point for.
Yeah, so just to give you a quick update, we did double check with Bill Pepperoni and the, there is a soft survey launch this week. We're actually doing some field testing on the questions, so understanding them, are we, you know, and.
I really misread that. Value of my house.
And, uh, and so the, the main launch will happen starting after this week.
No, that's the general question.
The general plan, sure.
For the additional chapters.
Yes, yeah, so, so again, it will be going, I think it's gonna, the plan is to get back to planning commission. Again, and give feedback, and, and that's, that will put a public here in the show, the city council.
So we have forty-three minutes left, and we have, uh, six topics left, so I'm now gonna set my timer, we're gonna limit each topic to seven minutes.
Okay.
Which means that each council member gets to talk for about one minute about each topic, so.
Uh, you can cut me down, we can do the art discussion in five minutes, uh, because I can do that quick, so.
Uh, cause I, I can do that quick, so save me five minutes at the end of all five.
Well, then now we're at six minutes per topic, so. So set my timer right now.
Uh, Shannon, that was your scholarship announcement. What, what was your idea behind that?
Um, Orem City wanted to see more women in management and leadership positions. And so they created a scholarship for women who are already in the staff as, as employees there. So you can go to school part-time and there's kind of different thresholds, like it might just be five thousand dollars, it might be a lot more than that. I think it starts at five hundred dollars. And, and that allows women a, a pathway to be promoted and to improve their professional skills. It's an additional benefit and, um, can create, uh, just more diversity in, in government, which we don't necessarily have in, in Utah.
I kind of, I have an issue making it just sort of female. Like why not, why not just a scholarship for people to make it not something about gender or race to say, but just about. You know, need or, I mean, right now more women graduate from college than men do, like seventy-five to a hundred.
Yeah, I think it's because this is a, the city provides a public service, right? And so the services that are provided are provided to fifty percent men and fifty percent women across the board. And so, and there's a lot of situations where women's voices aren't represented, even though their taxes are going to that issue or they're impacted by that issue. Um, and so, and as George described, there's, um, tremendous benefits in corporations and in governments when women are part of conversations. And, and so it's not about race, it's, it is about promoting women in government where they are historically underrepresented and currently underrepresented. And if Orem can do it, Provo should do it.
Yeah, better.
Thank you. And we, how many women directors do we have in the administration?
Uh, right now, just one.
Okay, and how many directors are there total?
Eleven, twelve?
But it goes before on the corpus system.
Sorry?
It goes before on the corpus system.
No, we're not on the corpus system, but that gives you a sample of.
I think you're using government money for scholarships.
Well, maybe there's not the bones to that, but I think Orem has a great idea. I truly do. I think it's right.
Okay, um, so, so there's, there's some discussion about, you know, uh, there's poaching up and down with the state and the city government right now. Uh, maybe Bill lost the whole planning department inside of three weeks. Uh, so it's trying to keep us competitive, um, with our salaries, our benefits, making sure that we can hire the best people for Provo and not have to worry about. Losing them to other cities or losing current staff to other cities because they can get paid, uh, better somewhere else.
I think that's important. I, um, contact is damn softly about, about a position for employee. It was just like, got HR jargon back, you know? And it's like, what do we need to do to ensure that we're retaining our employees?
Right, okay.
And I did feel like there was a real clear direction for me and what we can do for that, so.
Okay, uh, we can, we can talk to, uh, administration and see what we can do, much like we, what we can do.
I, I'm, I think behind that is the assumption that if it's hitting the police force and we just made a big allocation for that, probably hitting other areas too.
So it is a, it is a current budget discussion. So if the council has strong feelings about, uh, how big a priority this should be, we'd like to know that. Cause we're, we're now in the, you know, figuring out the final pieces of the puzzle and this is a big one.
Well, you, you feel it more immediately than we do. But we feel it just immediately right now with just Cliff's position. We just know that we're struggling to be competitive. So I'm sure, it, it, it just occurred to a lot of us that this is, this can't be unique to Cliff's position or to a few police officers.
And as you know, we do a market study every year comparing other cities and we have that data now. And so it's playing into the budget discussion. So, yeah, I, I think you'll see when the mayor is stretching the budget, there are proposed solution figures and then we'll see. It would be good to know because obviously we can't always do everything that's a need, uh, prioritize needs. I mean, we're, we're struggling, not, I should say struggling, that's not the right word. We are evaluating a wide variety of needs, including this one. And this is really important to you then.
Um, let's just down a little bit, um. Let's go to, in, ensure fees and services given off inflation. Uh, make sure that we are not, general fund isn't backfilling, like the residence law license, the business license, not, nothing to be charged, fees for services. Make sure that those are being kept up with inflation. Someone had an argument years, uh, that is returning, especially since, you know, gas, fuel prices have almost doubled last year. To make sure that all our services and fees we're charging are actually reflective of what is happening in the marketplace. Uh, build up the general fund reserve, uh, this is Mr. Shipmates. You wanna tell us, oh, give us an overview, real quick overview of your thoughts on that?
Well, in conjunction with the fact that I need us to keep the labor market competitive and increase cybersecurity. I just think we should always be happy expectation, and I think the mayor does, I think the administration does already, to, to feel like. The general fund should never be going backwards, especially in an environment where our sales tax revenue is inflating at the, at the rate that it is, right? So, so if we have a year where sales tax revenue goes up substantially and revenue to the city goes up substantially and our general fund shrinks, I think we're doing something really wrong. Uh, that, if, if everything else is inflating, we should be inflating our general fund. There, the needs of the general fund are improving at the same time. So, so just a general theme, but, but actually as, as something constructive that we as a council can do. I think the cybersecurity piece and I think the competitive labor market piece are two that are really high priorities for me. I, I just think they both represent risk to us as a city and how we operate. I think they're substantial risks. Obviously cybersecurity is a substantial risk, but, but so is not being competitive in the, in the labor market. And, you know, we see how productive or how that hurts productivity, you know, with our own group, um, you know, to have people leave. Uh, you know, especially after they've been trained and, and, and are good, you know, in a system. So, so I, anyway, that's kind of my, they're, they're connected. Like I wanted to move that direction with the, with the general fund, but I'm, but I'm strongly supportive of financially us, us as a legislative body being supportive of the administration moving. More competitively in, in, in how we pay people and also, uh, starting to fulfill some of the asks from the cybersecurity area. I think, I think what happens with most cities is we probably get into a situation of thinking it's like a sinking fund or not really an investment in anything. We can't really go out and say to our, our, the citizens, hey, we increased cybersecurity and that, you know, did this, this and this. Like there's nothing we can point to, it's kind of like the emergency fund reserve that we did, like no one cares until there's an emergency. No one cares until there's a cyber event. But anybody in, around municipal, you know, municipalities, any of the associations associated with any of the municipal power, uh, groups or, or any of these associations will tell you that this is high, high risk for all municipalities. We're low-hanging fruit and we've gotta, we've gotta make this more robust.
Uh, who put up use key performance indicators budget? Can you give me thirty seconds overview on that?
Yeah, so John will have a little bit more detail than me, but for the last three years, the last two years that we've been on the council, we've been grading the budget and, and having, uh, departments come and evaluate their own budgets. And their needs based on the general plan. But the general plan is a document that's based on the built and, uh, natural environment. And so what does, how can the police give us their performance based on the general plan? How can the library give us their performance based on the general plan? But if we went to every department and said, give us five or six KPIs that you think we should be grading you on, and then we just pick two of those that matter to citizens, that matter to us. And say, every year we want to see your progress on these KPIs. And, and if you're not meeting where we think you should be or where you think you should be, then tell us where that budget deficit is. And then we can know to prioritize that, um, code enforcement might be one, right? We need whatever kind of code enforcement enforced within sixty days. And you show us over the year that KPI and if we're exceeding it, very great, we're doing a good job. If we're below that, then is there an administrative issue, is there a budget issue, is there a legislative issue? Um, but it doesn't make sense to judge the police, the fire, the code enforcement team, even public works in many cases, or the library. Or the airport against the general plan.
Who put up retain lobbyists?
I did.
Okay, can you tell me about that one, Tish? Thirty seconds. I'm just trying to touch on the ones that are less self-explanatory.
Yeah, so, and someone will correct me from the administration, but I think, um, Isaac Paxton worked, uh, somewhat as a lobbyist during the session. And then the city also has a contractor, the lobbyist during the session. I didn't know we had a lobbyist contracted for the city until this last session when I was working on the Hill. And there might be an issue, as has occurred in Salt Lake City or other cities, where the council wants something lobbied this way. And the mayor wants something lobbied this way. And are they aligned and do they know they're aligned, do they need separate lobbyists? Or can you be proactive enough to communicate to the administration ahead of the legislative session and say, hey, we want to work within these boundaries, this framework. These are our policies on X, Y, and Z that happens at this state. And so we expect any city lobbying to be within that boundary.
Who is our contract lobbyist?
Paul Rogers.
Paul Rogers, who must do it, is it? Because I see you as our private lobbyist. Um, it's a good question, when the airport funding is happening, I mean, you've gotta hand them a task. And right now we're on basically a, uh, these. You know, if, if there's a significant task, it will come to us with a higher contract, you know? We're calling them contract lobbyists, I'm not sure what a lobbyist would be, I guess not in-house, yeah, so we have, we have external lobbyists. So, we, every year we, we sit down, we evaluate, you know, what are, what, what can we go last for, what's a big priority for us? And, you know, we see there's one that has a big deal, say, hey, put a star by this one and tell us if you need more money on it and that, okay, so. I don't know if I answered your question. What's our budget?
Right.
Um, yeah, it does fluctuate a fair amount. Again, as Isaac suggested, it has tended to be more about going after appropriation than it's been about a lot of other, you know, priorities. So, so from a, from a policy kind of perspective, we rely on Isaac and supplemented by the rest of the, the city team, uh, working on legislative issues. But to, but again, from a, from a going after state appropriation, or trying to find a way to a grant program, or whatever, that's kind of what we've used them for. In some years it's a hundred thousand dollars, some years it's fifteen thousand dollars.
We have no lobbyists for years until we decided we'll be there. You know, we decided, we better do it in a big time.
The, the council does have a line item for hiring a lobbyist already into our budget. I think it's fifteen or thirty thousand dollars a year, we, we haven't been using it, but the line item's there and it's funded. So if there was a council issue that we decided as a council, we wanted to hire a lobbyist for independent of the administration, that line item's there.
Paul Rogers is good man, he holds his way around the Hill. Maybe it'll be a rare issue, but we want to have lobbyists that's working at the office of the administration's office.
But it's there, I mean, it's, it's, it's budgeted for if we needed that.
I think part of the conversation is to revisit this in October and November and say, what does the council want and what do we not want during the legislative session? So that we're all on the same page. Just because we put out a resolution doesn't necessarily mean that the administration is going to hustle for that or against that.
There will be the coordinate third place.
That's what I'm saying.
But I, I like your idea about KPIs. They certainly help us in terms of calibrating the budget, see how things are going. How they impact you on the administrative side.
I think we're all. Yeah, some departments obviously, we sit in our room where KPIs are analyzed every month by the energy board. And dive deep into things like reliability and safety and those kinds of things. We could, other departments do some of that internally, some departments maybe don't ask all right questions. It's statistical reports, but are the really key performance indicators. You know, it was the size of the library collection, it's interesting data, but I'm not sure you call that a KPI. You know, things like participants in, um, you know, uh, reading programs at the library, that's gets closer, right? Cause that's, that's trying to accomplish some good policy objectives. So, so, yeah, we would, we would love to put more emphasis on that.
For future projects, how would we look about coordinating KPIs with the administration?
I, I think let's, let's talk, uh, we're doing, we're doing some already, it's obviously not super great. We can stack it up against most, you know, many cities who really focus on performance measurement. Uh, but we, you know, we have some good data. Uh, I think what we have to do is figure out is getting you the information you need, uh, as much as it's been giving us information.
I can, I can work with administration to come up with a KPIs and bring them back to the council.
Or have a council committee to investigate that.
Or we can have a council committee. So, uh, let's jump to housing real quick for, for another time. Probably won't finish all, let's try to get to housing and parks today. And we have a little bit of time in the work meeting next week, we can pick up the last couple ones. So housing, we have a single house, single home, single-family housing. We have a lot of stuff surrounding that, uh, because of the neighborhoods, uh, you know, one is to increase the stock. Two is to protect the neighborhoods as they are now, make sure, uh, density doesn't come in, property values don't drop. Uh, big one is increase homeownership, uh, there's lots of deferred rent taxation to deal with that. Uh, decrease the number of rentals, which is the hardest one for us to do. And the last one is control short-term rentals, the Airbnb's.
I should have indicated this, but we don't have a housing, sort of, uh, housing inventory.
I think Melissa's working on that right now.
Yeah.
Melissa McNally, she's, um, slowly going through that.
She's through like four neighborhoods?
Yeah, so.
And she's been working on it for a very long time.
The other thing would be to pay to have.
But one thing with her numbers, like she's saying it's a single-family home or a partner that, but we don't hope it's a rental home.
Right, we, we would, we would only be know that if we can run it across our registered ownership.
Which wouldn't tell us.
The property owner data versus registered owner data.
True, yeah, we could run another database.
Uh, John, what does neighborhood protections mean? Is that like more gated communities?
I, I think, you know, like, like Dixon's one.
Scroll up the dates.
When I was campaigning in that area, a lot of the homeowners were, there's a lot of empty, like, so, homes have been sold and they're empty. They're owned by, you know, Blackstone or, no? The idea that there's investors already looking at certain areas and collecting homes, ready to like demolish them and put apartments kind of deal, you know, like protecting it from that kind of thing.
So going in the R C zone and buying two or three properties.
From like consolidation and like, uh, kind of, just changing the character in a big way.
Yeah, like investors taking away, you know, our limited single-family housing or, you know, homeownership options, you know, just increases both those.
Finding a big lot that's, you know, that's R one six and coming in asking for the B L D R.
Like those are some of our more affordable homes and there one buys up six of them and just can make a ton of money, it's not in the city's best interest.
And my question is, I think the council's worked on that for like ten, fifteen, twenty years, what legislative tools exist that aren't?
The which force base.
Sorry?
For which?
Well, kind of, mostly for both, I mean, a, a lot of people complain about investors, but I'm like, we can't, how can we control the market that much?
Well, there were phases when we had a better hold on it and we had some, you know, homeownership was in the deeds and stuff and all that got erased with John Curtis. And so now we couldn't, we lost some of that area.
How do you control the market though?
Uh, there's a few tools.
There's a few things you can do with.
I can, I can do a memo for you after next month, try, try to lay some stuff out.
There's, there's things we've done in the past, but we're not doing now. And it has changed the numbers.
Yeah, George?
I'm sorry, I don't know what you're doing. Um, I just want to go back to the inventory preparation for a second because it seems like, yeah, we've been saying for so long. Everything up on that board would really be helped if we had Victoria, so with the inventory, so, that's not the word we can use.
Housing audit?
Housing audit.
Yeah.
How far away is she?
Years, yeah, four neighborhoods down.
Can we pay for this already?
Yeah, no, at, at this rate, it'd be years.
Let's pay for this.
Can we get like four interns over the summer?
Years is not, is not gonna be helpful. I mean, we got a lot of what's gonna go into that general plan and everything that's like actionable from the general plan. Really relies on, on KPI.
I could train my fourteen-year-old to go through the Cali Land records.
Yeah, that's fine, just. There's some patients who have, we have thirty-three thousand housing units, uh, at Provo. And so it, it is a monumental task, I just, I want to, I want to sugarcoat the thinking that if we assign one staff person part-time among all her other duties. To do a housing audit, it is going to take years.
Thirty-three thousand?
Thirty-five thousand.
Well, knowing that, I mean, I am, I, I, I sympathize with the job, I don't, I'm just saying, knowing that.
Well, knowing that, I mean, I am, I, I, I sympathize with the job. I don't, I'm just saying, knowing that, then, then we need, we need a Plan B or Plan C because that's not, that's not going to help.
To me, this is, this is like what you would consider like a, a keystone, like objective or task that we can get done that will then impact so many other things.
Yeah.
So I would prioritize something like that.
Because. For the housing, let's get the, let's get the audit done and see what we, information and data we get and move on from there.
Let's find a budget to get it done.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So when we were talking about, um, our competitive labor market, could we maybe look at doing a program to help incentivize or to help give grants to city and school district employees to buy houses in Provo?
There are programs, other cities have those kind of programs we can look at them. And we have a very special extension, so we possibly, and then you guys can sign.
We do, yeah. So we have had one for public safety.
Yeah, but if we could expand that, then you're doing things to increase homeownership. You're getting more people who aren't, you know, super high income and ability to buy a home. And we're tying them here to the community and that can make them harder to coach.
And there's other cities that do, like they require ten percent of the development of a certain size to do.
I agree with that.
The cheese for workforce.
Yeah, they're doing that.
Representative Rogers is on the housing, um, or not, so permission. For the state, two years ago, he helped to pass a bill that was kind of like a pilot program, like an organ we either that was work for public and how they kind of for their teachers. There's been just like, um, public school teachers, but then they extended it out the next year. So we can look at how they did that. And they worked that through the state and got state funding.
Okay.
And there are plenty of these nationwide. We're not going to list them as.
Yeah.
So there's plenty of models to object, so whatever it is, we can come back to you, lay out your options and costs, because a lot of costs.
It will, but yeah, thanks.
All right, so we'll do the, we'll get the housing audit done and figure out how to get it done.
And then there's another housing workshop to be added.
Yeah, yeah, we can have a housing workshop after that.
Done today, one last time in charges. Uh, when I looked at section seven, so neighborhood protections, I, I assumed the thrust of that was zoning enforcement.
Part of it is, yeah, it's, it's, it's a little bit of everything.
They just thought that maybe be part of section seven. Certainly has improved, I have to say that.
We're back up to full staff after the first area of full staff. Uh, the zoning committee is, uh.
We dissolved the zoning.
We dissolved it, but I was going to ask the housing committee, um, in about six, at the end of the year, to take a look at the zoning code enforcement and see how it's done since we have fully funded it. And make sure, if it's not in its old wire, we can help. So that would give them, uh, almost eight years of that data. Okay, parks and recs, regional sports, or sports park came out a couple times for review, for review. Uh, right now it's slated to be done in twenty twenty-six. Um, some of you have asked what we, what would it take to get that in twenty twenty-four?
I thought some of the funding had to, I thought had to go to twenty twenty-four, they lose some of the funding, like.
Twenty twenty-six, I talked to Scott, twenty twenty-six is when they're, when they're trying to get open, what would it take to get to twenty twenty-four? He told me there's an eight million dollar shortfall right now, eight million dollars to get it happen finished by twenty twenty-four. The economic impact, uh, they're predicting about thirty million dollars a year if we can get this thing up and running. So as, it, it crosses a lot of things off. You could get economic development that we're looking for, um, in our hands in our parks. Um, you have our funds, I'm sending this, send it all to them, but maybe there is something we can look at or what can we do? Um, to help. And basically it's all going to be financial. Because legislatively, it's all, everything's already in place.
I think, I think most of us, at least a year ago, thought that, that there was a plan in place to fund the sports complex.
Yes, they can get there.
We talked about eight million dollar shortfall. At least you're a little nervous. What, what is the plan?
Well, it's eight million dollars if you want to get done by twenty twenty-four. Because it's in the C I P program. So if you want to shortcut and get them two years early, we're going to have to come up with that eight million dollars that would come out of C I P funds.
Cool, thank you. Uh, that's fair. And we've been, we've been focusing on twenty twenty-six. Uh, a big part of the challenge is getting the utility infrastructure in. That's again, not in Scott's budget, but it is in C I P plans, many of which are not yet fully funded. So there's, there's a lot of pieces to the puzzle.
So because that has such a revenue potential, your business might make sense to accelerate the expense.
Yeah, and again, I, I, I wouldn't want to fully equate economic benefit to city revenue. Yeah, those, those are not the same thing. So again, as, as we look at investment in the regional sports parks, it's way more about providing fields and access to our residents. We hosting the tournaments and getting the hotelites and all that stuff is great. That tends to be, you know, more revenue source that goes to other entities than it does to us. And so again, economic impact is great, benefits a lot of folks, however, doesn't create a huge bottom line impact to the cities. Right, strange. So again, I just, I just be careful about trying to characterize, you know, how many dollars might come back into the city's coffers. And you know, one percent inkeeper tax, it's awful lot of work. It'll introduce you a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, so yeah, it's, there's a, there's, there's, there's moving parts. Now, that being said, it is clearly our number one parks recreation priority and we're trying to figure out how to get there.
That, right, this was only to speed it up to twenty twenty-four. They have the timeline of twenty twenty-six. We do nothing, they still anticipate twenty twenty-six. Question was, if we did it next year, what would it cost? And the dollar amount was total is about eight million dollars.
And I would say, I may have missed a media, I've been out of town, but I had never heard that, hey, we have all our money to get it done to twenty twenty-six. There were still some question marks on every chart I've seen and yes, let's apply for this. But I, I think even in twenty twenty-six, you may see us saying, our money, you know, should we leave some of our money to, to, to dissolve this? We're setting aside, you know, to, to know that we can get there. Because otherwise, yeah, we lose our county money in twenty twenty-six. So it's, there's a lot of reason to do this.
I had mentioned Rock Canyon. I don't see it here. Rock Canyon master plan is, is several funding.
Maybe I messed it up. It's probably, you probably didn't have it and I probably.
Oh, okay. Yeah, if you could just add it. I, I had mentioned Slate Canyon and Rock Canyon, both.
Yeah, the master plan is for both of those. Um, again, that would be more economic. We'd have to pay to have those plans, so it'd be funded to, uh, Scott.
Yeah, just to update others, the Rock Canyon master plan is drawn up. And it has funding needs going forward in order for it to be implemented. Slate Canyon has one, but it is in need of revision because of the new, uh, properties that were purchased there and because some of that stuff was really outdated. Um, so that's where those two things are, that those, those both, um, have a lot of citizen interest. There's a lot of volunteer hours that citizens are willing to put in to implement those things, but we have to sort of, you know. And, and one of the big things with Rock Canyon is there, there is in the plan, a proposal for a roundabout, uh, at fourteen fifty east, which could affect everything else that they're doing, but it's like notch to make one of those big ones.
Where is it?
Right, right, fourteen fifty east and North Temple.
Fourteen fifty east.
Just as a cover.
Last eastern road that goes up, goes south.
Yeah. Yeah, right at the, right at the parking lot.
One thing to recognize with Rock Canyon and Slate Canyon is that citizens get excited, they hear these commitments, they come out for service projects, they do things, they, they get, they're excited. And then, you know, we have to plan and then we have to fund and, and those, and then they get, uh, kind of deterred, honestly. And they think the city's not keeping their commitments. And then, yeah, five, six, seven, ten years later, then there's more excitement and hey, maybe we can make something happen. And then the cycle continues where we're not moving or we don't have the money and they're deterred. Um, I, I would feel much better, I would feel like we were keeping our commitments to citizens if we made some strong advances at Rock Canyon and Slate Canyon.
Right, and this would all be funding. Legislatively, the, you would have to make funding decisions at this point. Uh, unfortunately, parks and recs is going to be all funded. Let's see, Rachel, increase the number of parks with bathrooms.
If a park has a playground, it needs to have a bathroom.
So.
That was in the master plan as well, right? Parks and Rec master plan, the indicator that they wanted more bathrooms.
Yeah.
It's not just you, Rachel.
Yeah. I mean, anyone who goes to park with a toddler, I mean, it's huge.
Um.
Stunning that, that's not hard.
An additional ballpark to start. Uh, the water wise efforts for parks, um, I, I've never reached, I have no idea.
What are you talking about? Using water, green water system?
I don't know, more, um, I, I don't know what your water system is, so I don't know.
There's, there's a very sophisticated water system that is weather driven, uh, in the parks today. Now, do, do we always, sprinklers always go off at the right moment or not, you know, go on at the right moment? Not every time, but, but I think we're doing more than most cities with regard to effective park air protection.
On that, what we want to do is a, a strong education component to the public to let them know that we are doing it responsibly and that we're creating this green space for everyone to use. So you don't have to water your own personal lawn.
That's, that's the very point. And, uh, again, it gets, yeah, it does get tricky because there, we, we constantly get calls, well, there's a, don't you guys know there's a drought going? Uh, let your grass go, you know, go brown in the park. So the challenge is that brown grass doesn't last. And we put an awful lot of, you know, we beat that turf in our parks to pieces. Uh, once you lose the turf basis, it's really, really expensive to get back. And so again, we try to be really careful, be focused on weather, uh, water at times when the evaporation is low. But even that's tough because water lines going into parks aren't big enough to water a large park all at night. Uh, it's just, we just can't get enough water to get that done. And so again, we try to be really careful about that. We'd love to have Doug Robbins come in and talk to you about water wise efforts in park. It, it's pretty incredible what we can do with that.
We can educate.
Even from the process of managing fertilizer and, and pest control, those kinds of things are all focused on trying to make the water use more effective. So we'd be happy to come and talk to you. I think you'd be really cross-coached.
Yeah.
We need to start off.
Let's, let's do that and then maybe get a nice little thing out in mailers and everything as we hit the summer.
We can also educate them that it meets the upper floor and how important that is and how much our water comes from the upper floor.
Lots of these. There's plenty of trees.
Some there have. What is the large change in the small guy?
It's a thousand trees.
So the mayor has run a project, Rachel.
The problem is that's not available unless the adjacent homeowners going to be able to commit to watering it. And there are parts of the city where they desperately need trees and they don't have that.
One, um, we've done some neighborhood matching grants in the past, took in the neighborhood, for instance, they did several years of matching grants where they, um, purchased, they like used the money for the grant to purchase the sprinkler installation. And the homeowners had to contribute, like helping dig the trenches for it and stuff so that they could plant street trees.
Okay.
So that's one, that's one thing that we've done through some neighborhood matching grants, so, um.
And Rachel, the major concern is.
Did a lot of that.
Tree farming, so, I, yeah.
I'm just thinking about Wes Dixon and walking through there in August in a hundred degrees with no shade. And none of those people have shady sidewalks to walk on.
All right, since we're almost in six, uh, what we can do is we have some spare time in the work meeting.
Really?
So we'll bring back the last ones to go through with you guys. So we can try to get our own time there. The last thing we have to discuss is the ARPA funds. So the ARPA committee has been working on a criteria. Uh, so when, when the administration makes the recommendations on what should be funded to the ARPA funds, uh, we have a way of measuring that. Sent that, sent that memo out to you guys a little while ago to see the criteria. Another one was maybe using some percentages, like no department can take one thirty percent or no project can take about ten. So we just want to ask, where's those kinds of feel about? How do you guys feel that we should measure this? What do you feel about having a criteria? Is there any more criteria that you guys want to use to evaluate this? You can see there's a huge need for money. We only have X amount of dollars. We have to stretch the best that we can.
This isn't about the projects, it's about the process and the criteria of the evaluation.
So we need to be able to, right, we need to take two diverse projects, lay them on table and measure them using some criteria. You could talk about water, water, a new water plant or helping the park. Two different projects, different outcomes, but we have to be able to measure them. And say, this one deserves this much, this one deserves that much. And that's what they're trying to do. And that's what we're asking the rest of the council. Is there any more criteria that you want, uh, in this?
Uh, I, I think it would be really helpful to just have those laid side by side so that like we're aware of what the alternatives to, I, you know, you're obviously going to come up with your preferences and I want to know the reasons behind your preferences. But it's also helpful to see what the alternatives are, what might be some of the reasons for the alternatives. So that, you know, it, it feels like we're still, um, I don't know, I don't, I don't see the things that you see. And so I, anyway, I guess I'm just suggesting the more, the more information you tell us about your process of evaluation, the more, uh, comfortable I feel about it, especially with the, the price tag being what it is, you know? I, I want to be able to say, answer to the public as well as anybody else about why this was our, our best use of these, these funds.
So we've been, we've been working kind of down our own track on, uh, on criteria to use in, uh, for projects for recommendations. So it'd be interesting to know and collaborate with you on what yours are and what ours are and see where's the overlap and where's the difference. That would be super helpful. We've just not been invited to just speak in your opinion, so we'd be happy to do that.
George, we have this.
I was not aware of that. I thought, I thought the ARPA conversation was a joint conversation.
We have this committee of me, Dave Shipley and Catrice.
Totally reached out to us.
And we.
Yeah, we have at this point.
We've created a process of evaluation. We haven't asked, we haven't solicited projects from the administration or the council. So right now we're creating a process of evaluation. And so.
The commitment from the administration was that they would involve us in the conversations early on.
Yeah.
So we haven't started that collaboration yet. So I think, George, that's what you're referring to is that we, when we talked about this committee, it was, this was going to be collaborative at some point when we're ready, you know, to talk about actual, you know, process and things. But the committee work to this point has been, is there a process as a council that we want to go through to evaluate projects? Independent of how the administration comes up with their projects, is there some kind of something? Are there things that are important to the council or the priorities of the council? Not project specific, but just, you know, that we want to process through as a council when we look to evaluate a project. So if we can't come up with any of them, you know, that's fine. Like then we'll just look at projects like we did before and try to, you know, go back and forth on why, you know, that they're a priority. But the thought process was maybe there are some things that we all agree on as a council would be important to process the different projects with.
Like maybe we all agree that helping the poor is a really high value. And so we're filtering all these projects to come through with that lens. Does this help the poor? Is this helped the poor? Right? Or is the value of kind of distributive, um, access to this asset, to this capital, program, whatever, right? And then we can filter it through that lens. Is this helping the whole city? Or is it concentrated in one part of the city? So those are the kinds of lenses or paradigms or filters that John tried to capture and we tried to create in that memo. And that's what we're asking the justice feedback for. Is what lenses are we all going to apply to these projects and which are the most important? Are we just going to take helping the poor and the off? And we only care about things like, you know what I mean? Like, so that's what we're asking for. How, how, what values are most important that we can grade and judge these against?
Yeah, that's what I, yeah, I would just hope that, I was assuming that conversation, it sounds like it still will happen before it comes to the council as a whole. Because I mean, I, I just don't want to be like in a position where, you know, it's been meticulously thought through on the administration's part, but we don't understand what that thought process was and that's, I don't want to, I don't want to stand in the way of instructing a well-putted out process, but I also don't want to feel like I didn't, I didn't know what that thought process was. So that's why I thought this conversation was, so I, I just hope that happens.
Yeah.
And, and the committee, I think, is looking for the infinite four other counselors of what are your values? What do you want us to grade these projects against? So that's it.
Well, so is that going to come to a work meeting or what, what are you?
Essentially.
Well, yeah, it was somewhat, one of the first budget hearings before ARPA, um, when we talked about, uh, your budget priorities, that would be something that would be very important saying, um, and we would work with administration beforehand, so they, they're not, you know, they understand what we're trying to do. We just wanted to know, is there some value that you have as an official counselor? That when you look at these projects, that you're going to measure them against? Not just, you know, the project, how, how the project stacks up on itself, but what value are you assigning it for the city? Are you concerned, you know, is this like an aspirational project that won't get funded for ten years and it's going to do it now? And that's how you want to look at it? You want to see aspirational projects brought to the forefront, ones that we can't find? Or maybe you're looking at, hey, we want to go into neighborhoods, neighborhoods that, um, really need. Or maybe you're looking at, hey, we want to go into neighborhoods, neighborhoods that, um, really need help. We want, you know, to, to trees or parks or whatever, sidewalk, streets, there is whatever. So that's what we're trying to ask you is what value do you want to measure all the projects on?
When we're said and done, if all the money was spent on one public works project, are you going to be happy with that? And if you're not, then tell us that, tell us that you want a distribution across departments, across diverse projects. If it, all the improvements were in one quarter of the city, are you going to be happy with that? Or do you want it distributed across the city? So those are the kinds of values and filters we're trying to capture.
It's just so, it's so big.
And it's supposed to.
I mean, if you ask hard at, I'm like, yeah, uh, on some gut level, I don't want, I don't want all of that money to go anywhere. But on the other hand, there might be some good reasons that I could be persuaded of why most of it should go one place.
I guess it's.
I'd have to hear that.
What, what's going to, what, what factors are going to persuade you in your decision? That way, that's how we can try to measure this.
Well, I think those are important things to signal to the administration, right? I think that's the point of this whole meeting today is to say, look. You guys are primarily responsible for the budget. You're also primarily responsible for vetting different projects that would be, that ARPA would use, right? So we're going to depend on their vetting for a lot of this, but we can also signal as a council the things that we prioritize. And I think that's really important.
Okay.
Um, and then be collaborative, obviously, once we've signaled that. They're going to signal their priorities, we're going to signal ours. And I think that makes the process better than, than what happened first round up here.
You know, it also seems to me that there's, I mean, as I recall from previous rounds of some of this federal spending. There's a, there's a, there's a little bit of a double impact that, that it has, right? Because you, you say we're going to put five million dollars toward this, that's five million dollars that we were going to spend. But now we can prioritize somebody else. And so that would be really helpful for me in the process too, is to think about what. What injecting that ARPA funds now does to some opportunities.
One of the things in the memo.
It's going to be costly.
Yeah, one of the bullet points in the memo is, do you prioritize items that can repurpose money within a department? So does something that we do repurpose funds within a department that you prioritize, right? So if it gives basically five million dollars to parks and recs over the next five years, because they didn't have to spend it on something that we. Use for ARPA funds, that, that's a significant windfall for that department.
Or just if you want our new book on additional criteria, whether we should start that process while resetting our draft.
You have it.
You had it.
Put it in the.
Uh, last week.
A week ago.
I missed it.
Yeah.
We'll reset it.
I'll reset it tomorrow and call with everybody.
This was from you, John?
Yeah.
I see my previous email.
I feel so bad. If I blink, if I blink, I miss it, you know? So I will reset it tomorrow so we stop the mailbox. And then I'll, I'll follow.
Well, can I just, can I just point to public safety is a big one?
Yeah, uh, we'll do public safety on Tuesday. We'll start with public safety and work through the rest of them, um, and try to get them all. Then me and Malia will go through everything that you've said tonight. We'll try to repackage it. This is what we think we heard and send it to you and make sure.
Yes, I just point out Shane and I have been talking to the police chiefs, both at BYU and Provo about female students' safety around.
Well, safety for everyone is hard.
Well, I know, but, but Chief Ross said something really interesting to me. I don't know if he, he copied you in, uh, in the memo. Said, said if we had one officer just patrolling.
The perimeter.
The perimeter of the campus, it would make a huge difference. But he doesn't have.
So what do you, please don't do?
The outside campus, it's off campus.
Well, we have to, that is technically a hypocrite of the.
I know.
Wouldn't make sense to.
Yeah. That's where we have these conversations is because there's gaps at that interface.
I can't figure out.
Students, especially women, don't feel safe in that gap.
But they don't. Yeah.
And I'll just say, as a former BYU female student in recent years. My friends and I, if anything ever was sketchy and there was a lot of sketchy things in our team, we never went to BYU police because no one trusts them. Everyone just goes to Provo police, like. BYU police, everyone's like, hey, no one wants to talk to you. Everyone just goes to Provo. So just.
Is that for anything or just for?
Just for.
Female related?
Yeah, like when guys follow you around and watch your neighborhood, no one goes to BYU police.
Because they don't follow up.
Yeah, BYU police just, they don't do anything. So you get a problem.
I said, for example, let's take a piece of time to, and it's free.
Yeah, that's what we need. We'll start with public safety, work our way through it. Try, try to get them all done and then.
Well, we did pretty good. I didn't think there was any way we were going to get through.
No, thank you. It's not easy, guys, so we'll take the time.
Hey, I knew if I gave us the deadline, we still wouldn't hit it, but we'd get closer than we did.
I'd be with.
Um, so I guess, uh. Yeah, this time if there, unless there's no, if there's no objection, we'll now adjourn the public this whole council priorities retreat by unanimous consent.
Recording stopped.